Deborah will be joining us via phone. And Miss T, if you could call the roll, please.
Dave Burris.
Here.
Wes Grimes.
Present.
Jay Arquettleson.
Here.
Debra Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Kailin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As always, reminder by conflict of interest, if you have anything on the agenda, please let the council know before you vote on it. I need a motion to approve an amended agenda, please. The amendment is on page two of your agenda. There's an executive session to go into legal just prior to the West Oak building. I'd like to move that executive session and combine it with an executive session to go into for personnel. So I'd like to move executive session for personnel and legal to just before the personnel section, so it would be after the bid opening for the retail on sale liquor license and between personnel.
I make a motion to approve the amended agenda, moving executive session for personnel and executive session for legal right after the bid opening of the retail on sale liquor license and before personnel.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deborah, can you mute your phone until you want to say something to us, we're hearing all over the background noise. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the March 1st council meeting, please. Make a motion to approve the minutes at the March 1st council meeting. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are you going to have roll call votes?
No, thank you, Miss T. Because we have one member who's on the phone, then we need to have roll call votes for everything that we approved tonight. Miss T, would you call the roll for the minutes, please?
I'll try to get real fast with this. Burris.
Yes.
Grimes.
Yes.
Huddleson.
Yes.
Johnston. Lukens.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Romi.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. Motion passes. Need a motion for bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between in an amount of $187,857.65.
Second. Discussion?
I'm... How's your next one?
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Burris.
Yes.
Grimes.
Yes.
Huddleson.
Yes.
Johnston. Lukens.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Romi.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll make a fresh start here. I get a motion to approve the current claims, please.
Make a motion for current claims in the amount of $79,482.95.
Second. Discussion?
Yes. Are we done with our pre-bid grouping?
Great.
No, sir.
Could you pull your microphone closer, please?
Well, we have a ticket from Nelson's Oil and Gas Grouping.
They're not part of our pre-bid agreement. That's the tank at the street shop that we intend to fill with a tanker load and save money, but they couldn't get one and so they didn't fill up. The prices are higher. That was the best out of three competitive calls.
We couldn't use our pre-bid for that amount?
No, but our pre-bid did not include that location for delivery.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Miss T, would you call the roll, please?
Burris.
Yes.
Grimes.
I'm staying.
Huddleson.
Yes.
Johnston. Lukens.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Romi.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to communications from the public. I expect that we're going to have a busy agenda tonight, so anybody from the public that would like to speak, I would ask that you do that during communications from the public and not while we're actually discussing the agenda items. We'll give you an opportunity to raise your concerns about an agenda item prior to the actual discussions, but we would ask that you speak to the council while we're in communications from the public. And I do need to let you know that we have a public hearing at 7:10, so I may interrupt you to get to the public hearing, then we'll come back to you. All right?
I just wanted to...
So, need to have you state who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. Andrew Power, Southern Hills Economic Development. Good evening, Mayor Bob and City Council. I just wanted to explain the invitation that I passed around. The envelope says it's from Black Hill State University. They're the ones who are funding the training sessions, but the invitation received is actually from Rushmore Region Alliance. Southern Hills Economic Development is a member of the Rushmore Region Alliance and that is a committee under the Black Hill Council of Local Governments. You might remember that three years ago in November, Janet Addy came and gave us a presentation on-site selection and how that's done. She's the same presenter. She's very entertaining. And the two-hour session that you are invited to is specifically for city council and community leaders. And it's limited to 40 and you can dial in. And I hope I see somebody there. Thank you.
Any questions for Andrea? Thank you. Well, we haven't set up as though we, as we normally do. Just have to ask everybody to pull their microphones in close. And it's karaoke night, so make sure you make a loud noise.
Hello. I am business owner and also...
We'll do a test with Wally here, Deborah, and see if you can speak loud enough so that you can hear him.
Oh, maybe. I don't know. Can you? Can you hear me now?
Can you hear him, Deborah?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Wally Castro, I am the business owner, also chairman of the Business Improvement District. I went on a meeting with the advisory board from the Evans Branch and I asked for some discount for the people, motel owner, which one is also a member of the bit, to get more discounts for the people who like don't want to run the pool anymore. Like my situation, it's too much restriction for the coronavirus and I think we should shut it down, the pool. So Chrissy sent me email over here and she offered 20% discount. I was thinking maybe city can do a little bit better for us because we're doing something for the city too. We pay for the fireworks. We put the lights for the sign over here on the east side. We think we put another one in the north side. So maybe you can make her some recommendation for them or something like that and work with us.
All right.
Any question? Larry? No? Okay. Wally?
Yes.
What kind of, what do you have in mind? What is... I said like 50%. She gave us 20% discount. Do I know her? Okay, so with her situation, it'd be adults be 60 for $10.36 and 10 cents and the kids be $4.36 on a discount. In a situation like that one, I was thinking that once you make a rule for a little bit, so you gotta buy 100 or 500 minimum. And they gotta be paid by the credit card from the business or the business check. So they be going in the right direction. Because I don't think so is I think there's only one motel running the pool now is a payment. I don't know, they can get answered from the account lodge and they look like they say USA don't have those right. So they bring in more people to the Evans Branch.
Do you know if any other motel owners are interested in...
Yes or no? I talked to them with the bit board, so it's pretty hard to say.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I know the American Best Value gonna close out the pool, for sure.
All right. Larry, when are you having your next Evans Branch advisor?
Maybe the 18th, this Thursday.
Okay. Would you...
I can be over there too.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, if you would be with them, Wally, I would appreciate it.
Sure. No problem.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're just a little past 7:10, so we'll move to our 7:10 public hearing. Hearing on the proposed amendment to title 15 land usage, chapter 155 zoning code.
Excuse me, Bob. Can I comment now or can I...
No, no, we'll get back to you. We have a 7:15 public hearing and then we have a 7:15 or 7:10 public hearing, then we have a 7:15 bid opening. And as I've mentioned to you several times, you will have an opportunity to speak to the council about your concerns. Okay? So we're back to the 7:10 hearing on the proposed amendment to the title 15 land usage, chapter 155 zoning code. Use permitted on review adding subsection D daycare facilities in order to advocate for child safety and welfare by regulating and licensing daycare facilities within the city of Hot Springs. Bill, I believe this one is yours. Do you have any comments?
Just to give the council and the public some background, a couple of years ago when we had our first use permit on review for a daycare center, we realized that the only questions we were asking a potential daycare operator or the only constraint we had is that if, if neighbors within 200 feet of the facility were not concerned about parking or traffic, we had no, nothing in the ordinance that said we're concerned about your facility. As we looked into our own ordinance, we referenced the South Dakota Codified Law on family daycare centers, but the South Dakota Codified Law states that as long as a family daycare center has 12 or less children and do not receive state funds, they do not have to comply with the South Dakota Codified Law. So even if a parent was doing their due diligence and looked at our ordinance, it might look like, okay, the city is following the state law, so they're requiring daycare centers to follow the law, which in fact was not the case. So we started looking at, should we write an ordinance? And what we ended up with is we wanted to, we generated a daycare supplement for the use permit on review that addressed the things that we thought were the most critical. And that being, we're requiring the operators to do a self-inspection based on the state of South Dakota's inspection form and they have to submit that to us. We're requiring the operator to generate an emergency plan and there again, the state of South Dakota provides guidance on how to do that. We're requiring background checks for all operators and helpers 15 years of age and older, and we're requiring first aid and infant CPR training for all operators and The operators will require, are required to obtain an initial license and be renewed annually thereafter. And within the new ordinance language, our attorney has helped us define what it means to pass a background check. And so we feel like we've put in the necessary safeguards for parents and gives us a minimal amount of oversight that does provide appropriate safeguard for children in a daycare center.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments from the public? Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I asked Bill about that earlier.
Larry? Larry, up close and personal with your microphone, please. Can you hear me now? Is this thing on?
Yes.
Yeah. I talked to Bill here as asked about this. Now, they're on the passing of the vast background check. I'd like to direct this question to Garland, if it's okay?
Yes.
Garland, does this cover anything to ask for anger management classes? If anybody has ever gone through anger management class, will...
Is this thing on?
Yep.
Does this cover that? Does it do a background check on that also for people that have been in those classes? Any other states or things like that?
For instance, if a report to the Department of Social Services was made of child abuse and that allegation was confirmed, there's a registry and it's not viewed by the public, but that's part of that background check as far as make sure that person's not listed on that registry. Additionally, it states about felony convictions. As far as anger management, you have misdemeanors where anger management's required. That probably likely would pop up. So we're dealing mainly with felony convictions and if a person's name pops up on that child abuse record.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if I missed it or maybe it's not in there. Is ones that already have the childcare grandfathered in or does everybody have to redo all that?
They will have to apply, reapply, but it would be as if they were reapplying for a license. It won't be a new license fee.
Any other questions for Bill? Questions from the public? All right, this is on the agenda for your folks' consideration later in the evening. So we're past our, we'll close the public hearing on a proposed amendment to title 15 land usage. And we're past the point of our 7:15 bid opening for the lease of the city-owned retail on sale liquor license. And I believe we haven't had any seminals?
No, things were ready.
Okay. And can you tell us what we do now?
We just have one available, so if someone's interested in it...
All right.
They weren't gonna have a bid at that time? If somebody applies for it?
One person is interested and you approve it, we've met our obligation for advertising. You can decide to go out for it if more than one person wanted. You have choices at that time.
So if somebody wants it, isn't that to price its value then?
Yes, there is a preset value, a minimum.
Any other questions? All right. That takes us back to our communications from the public. Anybody want to speak?
Yep.
All right. You're gonna do plastic babe?
Yep.
And again, Ron, we may have a number of folks want to speak, so keep your comments around five minutes.
Yeah, you bet.
I'd like to get to everybody.
For everybody who may not know me, my name is Ron Eastup. I'd like to make a proposal to acquire these West Oak buildings. And I've come to the conclusion that this building can be saved. The solutions to the building problems are not unordinary or complicated. A plan designed by my account special engineer Lance Redinger, who specializes in foundation repairs forthcoming, Scott Sobe, a building inspector, was unable to accompany us into the building. Therefore, Mr. Redinger has not been able to see the building in person. However, based on the pictures I presented to him on the building, he concluded that this building is solvable. And just to go to give you an idea, I just touched on a couple different things. You need to stabilize the foundation with self-consolidating fill. Install a concrete wall adjacent to the doorway in the northwest corner of the consolidate and packed with consolidated fill. Install support pieces of concrete for, of concrete for bases for vertical timbers where needed to support the first and second floor. Replace timbers, beams, flooring, wood in general where it's needed. The building and what it represents is a personal, personally important to me, as the hot springs stated, that is my intention to stabilize the building in timeframe discussed with liability insurance, insurance from the day I buy the building and pay the tax debt. These are only generalizations. I cannot give you a detailed plan without full access to the building. These repairs are not, are not, non-technical labor. This building is historically valuable to the town. The building can be saved for less than what it would cost to destroy. Tourists come to Hot Springs to look at sandstone buildings. They want to feel a part of the history and enjoy the historic architecture. In many ways, Hot Springs is the sandstone buildings that stand there. I've been in touch with many community members that were, wanted to be involved with the construction and repairs. I would like to explore the possibility of resurrecting, to save our sandstone community. I feel that is important to form a nonprofit devoted to this project and others similar in order to be able to fund, raise funds for the preservation of our sandstone heritage. There is a demolition lien on the property. The current owner is never going to pay it. I'm not asking for financial help in the form of cash for this project. I'm asking the town to abandon the judgment of the demolition lien. This building can be and should be saved. Taxpayer money is better spent preserving than demolishing. This is a beautiful opportunity to do the right thing, come together as a committee to preserve our shared heritage. I ask for the opportunity to take on this project with your cooperation. Thank you very much. Any questions? And also to add, their liability insurance is no problem. I was kind of confused by what the, where the state was on that, but it was if there was somebody working on the sidewalk below the building, had to make sure that somebody was, I would be insured and somebody would, that would be a first, but if there was an accident, somebody fall off the building or something like that. So insurance is no problem. I've contacted the owner. He has an agreement to sell it to me. And I think it's very, I think we can stabilize the building and the time allotted. I have all, I have all the equipment I need. I need, I have lots of Doug Fehr timber. I've got some specialists in line. Lance Redinger is a foundation guy, so I think I've put everything in order that needs to address the situation. And I'm well-funded. So all I can ask now is if you'd give me consideration going forward? If you'd get rid of the demolition lien on the other building? I would like to take this on, save the money that you're about to spend on the demolition. So any, any questions?
You said you can make the timeline. Can you make the Jan, or the July 1st?
Yes.
Timeline?
Yes.
And by that, when you say yes, it will be stable?
Yes. Well, I present, we will present to you a plan by Lance Redinger and will fulfill those, that plan and have him inspected and work with Scott along the way if there's any questions.
What kind of engineer? Do you have a chance? Can you specify that for the council place?
What was the question?
What kind of engineer?
Yes, Lance specializes in foundation remediation. So he's, to give you an idea, he does a lot of underpinning. That's where you might have a foundation that's been starting to slip away. You actually undermine it, put a concrete form up against it, pour the concrete into the form, down the wall and underneath the building, which I don't think would be necessary in this situation. The doorway is undermined, but the sides of the corners, or on both sides, are still supported. The building walls in the middle and the corner are still supported. We would simply put a concrete wall across the doorway and fill it with dirt on one side to hold dirt underneath the sidewalk and back it up with more self-leveling fill. But yeah, I think it's very doable. It really is. The only thing I should have mentioned to you, we could stabilize the roof, the second floor and the main floor, but because it has steel trusses in the building, I would like to continue that. And there's a large lead time in order to get that material. And they would, if the trusses and the decking would be supplied by ballcraft, which is out of North Fork, Nebraska, and the time to receive that material will probably be somewhere in September. But in the meantime, the roof that is there is still standing and we can make sure the support is properly so it won't collapse. And then once we get the metal, we can lift the roofs out with a crane, take them up by 20, by 20-foot sections and dismantle them on the ground. And it would be fast. I think we could do them relatively fast. That's the idea I have in my head about the roof, but... And I talked to Socker on the fact that I had the insurance and he kind of explained to me what the, what they were looking for in the wave coverage for the building. And he seemed to think that that was sufficient for him to go forward. He was gonna put something in writing for me. He may have it done. I haven't had a chance to get back to it.
What amount of liability insurance do you intend to carry?
$2 million. I was making a picture of God and insurance and like the rules like that, that they insurance application. It comes from Lawrenceville, and it's a typical kind of a risk construction type thing made especially for this. It's relatively reasonable. The policies only $100, but it's about $1 million. And of course, if I, I'll have people working for me, I'm surely gonna have work with Scott.
Kailin asked Ron how much insurance you plan on carrying on the building. Would you respond with $2 million? Any other questions? All right. I'd like to respond to a comment that Ron said that he was unable to inspect the building and he's correct. He's asked on two occasions to get into the building. He asked last week during public works on very short notice to get into the building. And I had told him that, that the requirement was that our building inspector go with him when he's in that building. And our building inspector was previously occupied and couldn't meet the timeframe that Ron felt was necessary. I told him that John and I would talk with Scott and see if it was possible that Scott would be able to accompany him, and we weren't able to make that happen. I got a letter that I'll share with you folks in executive session while we're talking about West Oak from Ron. He was requesting to get into the building today. The other, back to when I told him that he couldn't go in without the building inspector there, I specifically said that he was not allowed to go on the second floor. If you remember reviewing the Olmerson Engineering Report, it stated that that building, he wanted it blocked off because he felt it was in imminent danger of collapse. And I shared that with Ron, and the city employees are not allowed to go on that second floor. There's a bottle jack that's used... There's a bottle jack that's used to help stabilize the steps, and I was not willing to allow the city to assume a risk that anything would happen to somebody going upstairs. The request that Ron gave me was to be in the building again today. He felt that signing a waiver, that being in the building would be okay and that he could be in the building with, didn't need to have anybody from the city there with him. I told him today that we just had one of the most significant snow events that we've had in a long time. We've got a real heavy snow load on that roof and that he would not be going in the building today. I'll share more information. Everybody's correct. He was not allowed in the building on two occasions, and I felt that the justifications were well-worned.
Understood.
The other question that I have for you, Ron, is how many people do you have available to, to make this happen by July 1st? What's your workforce?
Right now, I've only talked to three people.
So, you have three people to stabilize the building by July 1st?
Yes. I, I, being, being the fact that I don't know if this is going to go through, I'm sure we can, I can find more necessary.
Okay. All right.
But one other thing, I appreciate the, the chance to propose this to you. And I guess since the building's still standing after the snow melts, Mr. Redinger estimated that to be at about forty, forty thousand square foot with the depth of the snow being twenty-two, twenty-four inches. So, even without being stabilized, it's still pretty stable?
Yeah. Depending on what the council decides tonight on the motion that's in front of them, if they decide they, they want to go that way, I'm still in the opinion that you don't need to be on that second floor.
Oh, that's fine.
All right. Any other thing from, any question or further comments from the public regarding the West Oak building? All right. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Mayor? And one more, raise hand up there.
Good evening. Mike Summer, 549 Polbrook. Mr. Mayor and council folks, I'm just inquiring to see if you all had received my email I sent last night regarding the slated demolition bid and Ron's proposal.
I received yours and Karen's, yes.
Yes. Okay. I just, I got zero responses, so I'm just doing a follow-up.
Any other communications from the public?
I got something I'd like to read, Bob.
All right.
Councilman Pratt and myself met and talked on March 5th, and I believe and hope that we are good. The people that know me and have supported me, they know I am not a racist person. It's sad that people on social media are so quick to judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. Thank you, Wes. Anyone else? All right.
I believe that history steps as a sound plan. The required insurance and the engineers, well, the equipment and experience to accomplish what we need to do to save this sandstone building. I believe, willing and able to meet all requirements of what is required to get this
Thank you, Deborah. Okay. Anything else from the public? All right. That takes us to a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel.
I make a motion to go into executive session. Second, for legal and personnel in accordance with SDCL 1-25-2-3, legal, and I don't have the SDCL for one.
One is for personnel.
And that's one for personnel.
Second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Thank you, John.
Horace?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi? Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
I apologize.
All right. This, this may be a while, folks. We've got a couple of issues to discuss. We'll get back to you as soon as we can.
No, but whatever.
That's too much of a bill.
I tell you what, I drove, I drove up the ramp and drove along. Oh, man. You had one straight grid. It was bad, it was... You got top of the building. I don't know what's going to take. It's exactly four bars. I got that.
Just wondering, now you're gonna... First row and the first two seats, like the front screw is loose. Just notice that.
Yeah. They're, all they do is just hold the seat from popping loose. If you look over there, we've got somebody popped up.
Okay.
Chris will go back over there.
I just figured I'd tell you.
Okay. I appreciate that.
Just in case.
We weren't drinking. Okay, we're back in the council meeting. Go ahead and meet your fellow constituents, please. Thank you, folks, for your patience with us. All right, so that takes us to our personnel action. Going to get a motion on personnel action item A, and A only.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel action item A.
Second motion. Any discussion? Let's do, to call the roll, please.
Horace?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, folks. All right, then let's go ahead and the motion for personnel actions item B through E.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel action items B through E.
Second, discussion?
Yeah, could I, I'm kind of a point of order here. Cody Charis, we're just moving this person to the top of the scale, is that correct?
No, sir, that's, sorry, I think it's ninety-one percent of the top of scale, which would be the third.
Okay, so is this person the one that was part-time before?
No.
Is this a, is this a new position then? Is this?
No, it is an existing position. This person had not worked at the facility prior, but has certifications and worked at other aquatic centers.
Chris, is there anything you'd like to add to Wes's question?
Uh, just, we have an individual who's coming.
If you could come down front, please?
Thank you. We have an individual who's coming that has a lot of certifications and has a great deal of experience in the Spearfish Recreation Department. We're really excited to get all of his certifications because we can really do some things with programming. So, he's brand new in the city. Wanted to move to Hot Springs.
Is this person over the lifeguard?
I'm sorry?
Is this person over the lifeguard? So, in the future then, are we going to be looking for another aquatics director?
No, we, this will be our one and only aquatics director and aquatics wellness. So, it will be the position that we have had previously, but we will be looking for a whole lifeguard.
Okay. Well, this is a little later on here in our personnel.
Yep.
Tidying up something here, so I just wanted to make sure we're creating...
Heavy.
Okay.
Yep.
Zach.
Thank you.
Maybe you explained it already, but can you explain what aquatics wellness director is?
I'm sorry, there?
Can you explain what that position is?
Sure. It'll be the aquatics director that we have had for the past couple of years, but we're adding a wellness component to it. We want to do more programming and we want to utilize our weight room and our cardio room more, so this person will be also working specifically with all of those areas. So, supervising all of the lifeguarding staff, doing the training, doing the ISTs, but also offering some new things upstairs. We have already a silver and fit program. We'd like to add some programming that's actually out of water for that, so we're utilizing the facility better. Brings a lot of good experience.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks for asking.
Okay, so you have an aquatics, they'll be working the aquatics and in...
A wellness capacity, yes.
Okay. So, like a heart patient or something like that, has somebody to speak to when they're going in there to work out? Just using that for an example?
If they had questions, yes, absolutely.
Heart.
And this would not take the place of any therapy that comes from Fall River, which is the aquatics, it'll be middle. It would be, he has some training for, for weightlifting and for senior programming, so...
The silver sneaker?
Yeah, silver and fit. Our, our program is silver and fit. He's done silver sneakers.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Chris? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
You back?
We'll get you back up here as soon as we can. All right. All in favor? Roll call.
Horace?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our first ordinance. Ordinance item A, a first reading of ordinance 1226. Make a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1226 and ordinance repealing the following sections of Title III Administration, Chapter 35 Economic Development, Business Improvement, Subchapter Discretionary Tax Formula Rebate, Paragraph 35 dot 15 dash 35 dot 18, and Adding Grandfather Clause.
Second motion. All right.
I think it was the second, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
If you remember, this one was set for a second reading. It passed the first reading, but there was concern about the language in it and adding a grandfather clause to it. So, that's what, what we did here, and it's a significant enough change that it needs to come back for a first reading. But I will let you know that Miss State, John and I have been working on what that new ordinance would say to address the concerns that everyone had. So, we are diligently working on seeing if we can get something that would better suit the city back in front of you in a timely fashion. But this one would be the first reading of essentially rescinding the original ordinance, but put a grandfather clause in so that anybody that applied at the time that ordinance was in effect would have until October 15th to notify the city they do want, they do want to apply for that rebate. Any other questions?
Is it the opinion of our attorney that if someone...
Is it the opinion of our attorney that if someone didn't apply but would have qualified, that they are, we are... We need to give this rate rebate to them retroactively?
Well, we have an October fifteenth deadline. Is that, are you asking me to give after that deadline, they put in for?
Ignoring the deadline, just if, say the deadline doesn't, anyone, sure, we'll keep the deadline. If, if they would have applied but didn't, or would have, if they were eligible but didn't apply, are we obligated to give this to them? Like if someone came in today?
Under, under this grandfather clause, we are. But if we didn't have the grandfather clause, I don't think.
We still get to decide whether or not, if they didn't meet the qualifications of the original ordinance, if we're going to allow them.
Yeah, it's still a, I mean.
We still have that ability and we will have to determine that as a group.
So if we determine somebody is eligible and we agree to that, it got till October, right?
Correct. One of mine is James.
So I think what you're asking, Caitlin, is if, if I just figured out this existed and I had a, an improvement that would have qualified, but I did not apply for it, but I now apply for it before October fifteenth, and it does meet the requirements, I am likely to qualify for the rebate.
And that's going to be at council discretion?
Yes.
Because pre-approval was the requirement?
So despite pre-approval requirement, we're at council discretion going to give it to them? That's, like that clarified? We've not asked if we're legally obligated to?
No, under our discretion, when they qual, if they're qualified and we approve it?
Well, to qualify, they would have to pre-approve, so right away they're not eligible. Would be my interpretation. That's why I think we would need legal counsel. We do have an opinion from Garland that was written several months ago regarding the whole thing, saying that we're not obligated, but we have the authority to allow after the fact. And that's something we're going to have to address as a council after this. We have talked about establishing some plans about how we're going to contact people and try to get that worked out before we ask you to vote on that.
And for me, to the heart of Caitlin's questions, did the people know that they qualified and chose to not apply for it? I'm still of the opinion you can't deny something you don't know about. So it's up to them to demonstrate to you as a council that had they known, they would have applied. And where's the city's obligation in making sure they knew? Any other questions? All right. Misty, would you roll the roll, please?
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
No.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
No.
Kate Turner?
No.
So we had five and three. The motion passes. Thank you. Uh, ordinance item B, a first reading of ordinance twelve twenty-nine, and ordinance five, uh, to revise Title Fifteen, and that's the one that Bill had talked with you about during our public hearing. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Make a motion to approve first reading ordinance twelve twenty-nine and ordinance to revising Title Fifteen land usage, Chapter one fifty-five, zoning code one fifty-five dot zero zero four, uses permitted on review, subsection D, daycare facility.
Second. Discussion?
So who's going to do all the background checking, these people and everything?
The, the operator will have to do all the background checks. They'd provide us a list of names and dates that the background check work was performed.
He's going to be the operator?
Whoever operates a daycare center.
Do they have to do the background?
Yes.
Any other questions?
I guess, is this kind of modeled after any other town or?
No, we, we tried to model after Sioux Falls, but they have way more infrastructure and, and staff, and it just, it wasn't appropriate. We found that we were replacing health department for development coordinator about fifty times, and it just, it wasn't appropriate. And that's when we stepped back and said, okay, what, what can we do that fits the resources we have? And that's why we put, uh, the burden on the operator without what we believe to be overly burdensome. Because it's, the, the background checks, it's, it's really checked in two or three places. It's easy to check the, the South Dakota Sex Fender Registry. It's easy to check the, uh, with the state. For about ten bucks, you could go out and, and pay a subscription fee for a year and do background checks on people. And then if, if, if an operator decides they, they actually want to be state certified, and, and if they take, uh, children that are funded with state money, they can provide us with their state certification number, and they're essentially done. In fact, the second daycare center we looked at, uh, you know, we were asking all these questions, and they, the operator said, oh, well, we're, you know, we're state certified. Well, that, that answered all the questions because we're not inventing anything new. We're not putting any hurdles in front of an operator that the state doesn't already put in front of them. So.
Anything else? All right, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Onto, uh, resolution, Resolution A, uh, two thousand twenty-one dash six, a resolution creating a new full-time position of head lifeguard.
Make a res, or make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution two zero two one day six, a resolution creating a new full-time position of head lifeguard at Evans Plunge Mineral Springs.
Second.
Discussion?
Is this top of scale?
Up, up close and personal, Chris.
Is this top of scale?
Yes, fifteen is.
And so according to this, this letter, we have information, you're saying that we, you can do this without supplement in the budget? Is that what I'm seeing or no?
Nope. Uh, we believe we may be able to without additional appropriations, but there is a possibility additional allocations may be needed. If they are, and I did a breakdown of all the analysis of the already approved budget and the added expenses of promoting this from a part-time to a full-time position, um, they should not exceed thirteen thousand and would primarily be for the insurance and retirement benefits. The salary and wages, we believe, can be absorbed as well as the other payroll expenses in the existing and already approved Evans Plunge budget. The justification for that decision includes two factors. Primarily, the amount we allocated for salaries and wages is an estimate based on, you know, our best case scenario, and the plunge has never exceeded their salaries and wages that have been budgeted. So we have cushion there. And then secondly, they also have never used the full allocation for the subsidy. So between those two cushions, hoping for a better year than last year, we believe, but we don't have magic balls, so I can not guarantee that.
So if any, it, it will be small?
Well, if you think thirteen thousand is small.
What's the one, please?
Uh, that's additional allocation shouldn't exceed thirteen thousand if necessary. The total for the position is twenty-four, the, in additional funding is twenty-four thousand five hundred, if you remember.
What about qualifications, position, they have?
It's the same, essentially, head lifeguard, uh, job description as before.
I don't have a job description in front of you, do you know?
I'm sorry, I don't have it either, but it is previous aquatic experience. It's Red Cross certification, um...
Can he train other lifeguards?
Well, that's the hope.
Chris?
Thank you for your question. Um, this is a position that has been at Evans Plunge since I've been there, but it's been a part-time, non-benefited position. Um, this individual will be trained to do lifeguard instruction along with our aquatics and wellness coordinator. So that is a piece we will be adding. In addition, they'll be able to do additional in-service training. Uh, they'll be able to do scenarios with current lifeguards that we have. So yes, they'll be able to do all that training. The nice thing is if we have two people that are certified by American Red Cross to do that training, then we can do all of our training at Evans Plunge. Uh, and we can do more of it because they can rotate on the training. They've offered some blended learning classes this year because of COVID. Those have worked very well, but we really want to have the, all the training done in-house. It saves us so much money.
I agree. Will you be able to, uh, train and certify somebody from outside?
Yes, we, yes, we can, as long as they use the American Red Cross mod. You bet. Custer does, Rappleson, he's our booster.
American Red Cross is, is, we're the top, as far as, Red Cross, number one, as far as certifications.
Yes, yes. We returned to Red Cross from Ellis and Associates several years ago.
This would be your best, we need to keep that.
We need succession. You know, I, I, I can beg you for a position. I can ask you nicely, but what I need to tell you is we need some succession at Evans Plunge. We need some stability at Evans Plunge, and the only way we're going to get this is to get some people who are here for long periods of time. It costs so much more to continue to retrain people and have them come and go versus spend some money in benefits and stuff and get them to stay. I can tell you the story of a young man who wanted to stay in Hot Springs, South Dakota. He started out with us when I came in twenty fifteen, and he was a janitor for us. He moved into a lifeguard position. He worked a lifeguard position. He moved into the head guard position. But this young man, who's twenty-three years old, could not live on the, the wage that we paid him and part-time employment. He has thousands of dollars of medical bills because he didn't have medical insurance. This is a young man that would have stayed in Hot Springs. He would have raised a family here. He would have stayed with the plunge. Maybe someday he would have gone into that aquatics director position. He walked away from us because he could not sustain a life in Hot Springs. We would have had him for his whole career. We really need some sustainability. We need, we need mentors for our young kids. We need an adult there. When I leave in the afternoon, when the aquatics and the wellness director leaves, we've got to have an adult in the building that has some authority. Our staff runs, our lifeguard staff runs on a normal year when it's non-COVID, fourteen hours a day, seven days a week. One aquatics director slash wellness coordinator cannot handle that. I can't throw on a suit and go sit on the stand to bail somebody out. I have seven lifeguards right now. We have a young lady who's sixteen years old that homeschools. That's the only reason I can open at eight, at six o'clock tomorrow morning. It is desperate. You know, Evans Plunge is one of the big three. It's a golf course. It's the mammoth site. It's Evans Plunge. Without this, we have trouble. We, we need support. We need backing. We need, we need sustainability. Your speech is over.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep, I, I do have some questions for you. Um, you've answered some of them.
Okay.
And I don't want this to seem like you're on a witness stand, but it's not. It's out of my question. Um, but I took the time to write up ten of them, so I want to ask them, and I think it will be some benefit to, to hear your answers in public also. Um, looking at what Misty put together for us to help understand the request for, my recollection is this was a position that you requested in budget time for two thousand twenty-one.
Yes.
Among the justifications for the position was to help with supervisory coverage during business hours. Uh, that was one of the reasons. Uh, the position wasn't approved during our budget meetings, but you were asked to bring it back to council in the future if you felt the position was still needed. That's why you're here today tonight. Uh, your position with the city is a salary position, meaning we can work you for sixty hours a week and only pay you for forty hours?
Yes.
That's never happened, has it?
Oh, never.
Well, um, I'll let, I'll let you be the judge of that. Uh, looking at your time sheet for February twentieth through March fifth, you worked a total of ninety-two and a half hours?
If, if that's what the document says.
And you only got paid for eight hours?
Eight.
Or, I said eighty, not ninety.
Oh, I thought you said eighty.
I thought you said eight days.
Okay, so we got a heck of a deal. You worked ninety-two and a half hours and we haven't paid you for eight. Uh, we paid you for eighty. Um, I've reviewed your time sheets, and every two weeks, I, I review your time sheets about every two weeks, and this isn't the only time you've worked in excess of eighty hours in a pay period to provide coverage at Evans Plunge, and it, it happens often for you. Um, the hours you work providing staff coverage, hours you're not able to spend managing Evans Plunge, is that accurate?
That's a fair statement.
Would this position have helped, uh, with the number of hours you need to be available to provide staff coverage, allowing you to focus on the job the city actually has hired you to do?
Yes.
Uh, because this position has been a part-time position, has that made it difficult, if you adjust it, to find long-term employees for the job?
Yes.
That's what you've been struggling with. Uh, and Misty talked a little bit about it also. Can the Evans Plunge, Evans Plunge budget support expanding this position from a part-time position to a full-time position? The hope is yes, uh, but if not, the council understands there may need to be some additional funding then. So I don't think your request is unreasonable for the reasons you've, you've mentioned. Um, and if we're going to have the facility, we need to do everything we can to make sure it's a top-notch draw for everybody around. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Thank you.
All right, uh, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you all so much.
I give you kudos for dedication and hours.
Thank you.
Well, that takes us to new business. And our first new business, item A, a possible motion discussion to accept the lowest responsible bid for demolition of the West Oak Building.
Can we clarify the answer, please?
Oh, hang on, hang on. Um, John, would you give us an updated cost on that, please?
The updated cost after our public works meeting was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. From RCS.
Did you hear that, Debra?
No, I didn't.
The updated cost for the demolition of the West Oak Building, um, RCS adjusted their cost, and they adjusted it to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Okay, you, uh... Debra, do we have a second? I think everything is worthy of a discussion. I would hope somebody would at least second the motion so we can have that discussion. And then if you want to vote not to accept tabling it, we can do that and go on to a different motion.
I'll second the motion.
That's your call. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to... Deborah, can you repeat it again? I want to make sure you got it right to... Okay. Everybody hear what Deborah's motion is? Any discussion?
I'd like to ask some questions to Councilwoman Johnston.
Okay. Deborah, can you hear Caitlin?
I'd like to ask Deb if she feels that she's not in conflict of interest to vote on this publicly.
Did you hear that?
No, say it again.
One more time, Caitlin.
Deb, do you feel you have a conflict of interest in voting on this? I'd like to publicly ask you that.
No, I did not have conflict of interest.
All right, follow-up question, do you have money invested in this project?
I'm invested in the money, I haven't put any money or, you know, my investment. I'm just, I'm supporting the, um, supporting the building we have down.
Are you one? Deb, are you one of the three people Ron Eastup has lined up to help with the building?
Can you repeat that?
Caitlin is asking if you're one of the three people that Ron has lined up to help stabilize the building.
I'm totally willing to help him, I'm right here, but I've got no contract, I'm not an employee, I've got nothing invested. Does this sound good?
Deb, is Ron Eastup currently staying at your house?
Repeat that, ma'am.
Is Ron currently staying at your house?
Absolutely not, he has his own house.
I guess, I'd like some legal counsel, I guess. I kind of feel the same as Caitlin. I think maybe Deb's got a little bit of a conflict of interest on this issue.
All right, as far as conflict of interest, first off, I'm not giving any opinion either way, but I will note typically a conflict of interest is usually a financial.
Garland, can you come to the microphone, Deborah can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
State your name and address.
First off, I'm not giving an opinion whether there's a conflict of interest either way. I just noted that typically a conflict of interest is a financial interest.
Garland, okay. Come on, come in closer.
Okay, can you, can she hear me now? Okay. All right, first off, I would say I'm not giving an opinion on whether Ms. Johnston has a conflict of interest or not. I'll just state the conflict of interest typically is tied to a financial interest. However, council under our statutes can determine if a council member has a conflict of interest, and that would be based on a two-thirds vote of council. So basically, you can vote to determine if Ms. Johnston has a conflict or not.
And how would we do that? We have a, we have a motion in front of us.
That gets into a Robert's Rules of Order kind of issue. I would believe that someone would have to make a motion to determine if Ms. Johnston has a conflict of interest. Once that motion is discussed and voted on, then you would return back to the original motion.
Council clear on that?
I'd just like to clarify that I asked those questions because I've heard them twice from people tonight, and I feel it's worth asking.
Caitlin felt it was necessary to ask those questions. At this time, Hyner Landscaping, Inc., would like to formally petition the council to retract our offer for the West Oak Building demolition services. We regret that this request has been made after the bid opening events, but other circumstances have determined that retraction of the bid is of the best interest of Hyner Landscaping, Inc., and in our opinion, the city of Hot Springs. The circumstances at this time makes us feel that we would not, that we would not be qualified and capable to provide the services required in a request for proposal. We wish to remain on the city's local vendor list and have the opportunity for future bid opportunities. Thank you for this opportunity and your understanding of changed conditions warranting this bid retraction. Garland, would you share with us your opinion of why the council can reject Hyner's bid if they so choose?
Without citing the exact statute, under our bid statutes, we're allowed to not take the exact lowest bidder if we don't think they're a responsible bidder. Basically, the definition of that means that they're either not capable of completing the project, we possibly had issues in the past with them, such as they owe us money. It's a variety of reasons, but based on their letter, it indicates that they just aren't capable of completing this project. Consequently, they wouldn't be a responsible bidder.
And then because of that letter, the council can reject their bid, which then leaves us with the RCS bid as being the low one at a hundred and seventy-five thousand and feet being the next low bid at two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Correct.
All right. The other issue that has been discussed is the lien that is on the building. The city has placed on it. And Garland, would you share your opinion with us regarding whether the city can release the lien and under what conditions?
So currently, there's a judgment lien on this property and on another property owned by the Hot Springs citizens for progress. Currently, that lien amount is approximately about eighty-three thousand. Because the lien is on separate properties, we can't release the lien on one property and keep it on the other. So the only option in releasing the lien was to be totally, release the judgment, basically excuse the eighty-three thousand dollars owed entirely.
Council, have any questions for Garland while he's here?
I think you explained it pretty good.
All right. The other, one of the other issues that has been raised is a concern is what is the actual deadline that the state of South Dakota has given us to have the building stabilized or demolished? September has been suggested. July is actually the date, and that has been confirmed via conversation with Rich Zucker, Councilman Romi, and City Administrator Gregory, that July one is the drop dead date line, or date for that, a resolution to that building being available. The September date that has been discussed is a bid letting date. That's when the state will actually go out and let the bid to contractors. The July one date is the necessary date for everybody that's involved in this road project to have their paperwork done and submitted to the state so they can, as a package, then present that to what agencies with, with...
Federal Highway Administration, they're once planning this project.
So that they can take a look at all of that paperwork and make sure that everything is in place for the road project to be the bid letting on September first. What is at stake is however the city chooses to move forward, whether it's with the low bid with RCS or Ron Eastup's proposal, will that building be stabilized or demolished by July first? And it's up to this council to decide whether the risk is sufficient to, to go with Ron's proposal and his assurances that that building will be down or stabilized by July first. The state has said that is their drop dead date, July first.
I got a question.
What's hanging in the balance is a road project that has been delayed a number of times. And if it gets delayed again, we don't know where we're going to be on it.
I've got questions for Ron. Were you willing to pay that at the end of last year, it was eighty-some thousand dollars? There's quite a bit more interest on it from there. Are you willing to pay that lien off? Because we can't take it off because we lose both properties. The city would be out that whole month if we took the lien off the building.
I think it's safe to say you're never going to get it anyway. Yet, no, I wouldn't.
Well, we're going to get some when we sell the property in Custer. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just looking after the citizens. I know it's going to cause money to turn down, but...
Ron, could you come down to the microphone, please, so everybody else can hear? And the folks that are going to be watching this online will be able to hear your responses?
For me to pay the lien, I think that would be a deal breaker for me. I'm not sure what you'll be able to get out of the house that you're talking about. And could you maybe give me a little background on that? Is that in the process of being sold right now?
No. We, uh, it's got to be on a sheriff's sale.
Okay. Well, actually, I think the house is right across the street from my sister's place in Custer. It's a rather large house, now it's kind of got their pay jobs on it, but the way the price of property is right now, you might be able to get the whole lien.
Yeah, we thought that, and the property north of town too, and we got twenty-some thousand, now two big lots up there.
So now, on the lots, has that been sold and you've written down?
It is on the sheriff's sale, yeah, it's been put on there. That's why it's down to eighty-some thousand versus what it was up to.
So how soon do you expect to have the house sold?
We have no idea. The sheriff's sale on these lots up north took five to six months just to get the sheriff to be able to do it. So it's hard to say. We haven't even started that one in Custer, I believe, but, you know.
So do you have any way you can work this out to... Is there any compromise we can make to make this happen? Uh, you know, I'm not having that in the house, I can't make a real call, but anything that big, how we expect it to go for a hundred fifty? But, because it's just crazy what houses are selling.
Yeah, but we don't know that.
Yeah.
And if we took the lien off this, we'd have to take one off there. It's a, it's a package deal, we can't do it.
Okay. So would there be any way, if I paid for the lien, could I be reimbursed mine if the house cleared? Or is that going to go in your money, or in your pocket?
My feeling would be come back, come back to the city's pockets. We, we lost money on the last building that we demolished.
Yeah. Well, uh... I don't know, I guess I would, I would be willing to listen to all the legal angles that we might be able to take, or if that's, that's basically it, that one is married to the other, so you can't separate them. They're all tied into one judgment or the other.
If you were to pay off the judgment, we wouldn't have any reason to go after the property. So we wouldn't get both. If you were to pay off the judgment, we would no longer be able to force a sheriff's sale on that property in Custer.
So then if I paid off a portion of the lien, would that make a difference?
It'd still be there. Until the whole thing's paid off.
Yeah.
I would say it would ultimately be a canceled determination. Or maybe makes an offer to pay off such an X amount of the lien. That would be a deo if you want it accepted or not.
Well, it's not going to take the lien off the building.
If we, if council accepts to satisfy the judgment with the amount he offers, then it's just a matter of filing paperwork to release the lien. Often, though, it's your decision.
But we wouldn't be able to go up that property in Custer.
No, no.
Ultimately, we're still faced with that timeline of July first. That building's got to be secured by July first. There is no...
I don't, I don't think that's a problem. John, you might not be party, but it, all the sticks it needs under it to hold it up. And quite frankly, if, you know, we put all the shoring we needed underneath it, not in any shape or form, as long as an engineer said everything was solid, and if I own the building, I would probably go back and redo it to make it look better, more, more acceptable. Or, would I have a plan on what need, that I have to do to the building to make it utilized?
The problem is, it's not, it's not just your engineer sign off, it's the state's engineer too.
Not that I know of.
Well, I thought that was, I thought the state had, had their own engineer.
I would imagine if I came to you with an engineer's plan that was presented to the city council, and we, and you agreed to that, or it's the guy I want to use, you may not have a choice. But if he's putting his stamp on it, I would assume that would qualify to be inspected by Scott.
No, I thought there was some kind of a vibration.
I, I mentioned that, that we've been talking about before, but I, I don't believe that was said. I think that was what you were saying, John.
DOT would need a stamp, engineer certification to open the building, so it would, it would be riding home that engineer's stamp in his Arizona insurance insurance. That's correct. But actually...
What I would like to add, I suspect that we know Ron and Alan a lot about this, but I've had, my understanding is that I know your passion for it, we've had the conversations. Kara's passionate for it, Deborah's passionate for it, Mike is passionate for it. I can match, match your passion for saving the building with an equal number of folks that are passionate about it's time for us to move on. So it's a matter of really what is in the best interest overall of the community. And the, the road project, that's such a risk. I don't know how, how as a council, we could sit in front of the community and say that Ron did the best he could. He had no intentions of not making this happen, but for whatever reason, it didn't happen, and now the road project is at jeopardy. That's what this is all about. This road project is at jeopardy if this, if this isn't resolved, so...
I guess the only comparison I can make is that you're about to spend a hundred and seventy-five to tear a building down, and you're, you've got eighty thousand you're hoping for.
Yep. Did, in your conversation with John and Lance, did he indicate to you how many people he thought it would take to manage this and get it stabilized?
Oh, I, I think you're probably going to have to run there and give... Oh, I, I think you're probably going to have to run there and give it a go and just see what you have to adjust to.
Yeah. My, my question to you is, did Lance make a statement about how many?
No, he hasn't, he hasn't seen enough of it to be able to make a call like that. But I, I think as soon as you get into it and see what you're looking at and what the total, all the things that have to be done, you just let that be your guiding. And hire on board, you need to.
Okay. So again, in your conversation with Lance and John, he did not make any kind of statement about how many people he thought it would take to complete the project?
No, I don't think he could actually say that with the lack of seeing, seeing the building.
Now, Mayor, I would like, uh, I'd like to call for the vote for the motion that's on the table. All right?
But like, can I add one thing? I wish there was some way we could, some way we could work out that we could deal on the lien, but.
We, we understand your passion, but a motion has been made to call the vote. So that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tewitt, call the roll, please.
To be clear, this is to accept the lowest responsible bid for the demolition from RCS Construction. Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
With a heavy heart, yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. And John, what's the next step, Smith?
I will send a certified letter tomorrow to South Dakota Historic Preservation Society.
And my understanding is that previous conversations that we've had with them, they're knowledgeable of the situation and they've indicated that it's probably going to be fine with them when the building comes down?
That is correct. I have the documentation where they, they approved our plan or the action based on their bid.
Okay. And then can you get ahold of RCS to let them know that they were accepted as the lowest responsible bidder and be prepared to move forward?
Yes, I will notify them first thing in the morning.
Thank you. Uh, I want to state publicly, this hasn't been an easy discussion for the council. We have kicked this around in a number of executive sessions. Uh, and they all truly do understand the passion behind this building, both saving it and tearing it down. And I want to commend them after close to twenty years. It could be argued whether it was the right decision or not, but the council stepped up and made a decision. And you're going to be commended and I want to personally thank you for taking the risk in, in doing that. I, I appreciate it. Thank you. On to new business, item B, a possible motion discussion to approve request for proposal two thousand twenty-one dash three?
Make the motion to approve RFP twenty twenty-one dash three Brookside Park Sprinkler System Installation. Sealed bids will be received and opened by Parks and Recreation Committee April seventh with recommendation for responsive bidder selection to City Council on April nineteenth.
Second, second. Any discussion? I would just remind the council that in the fall of last year, Wes had talked about essentially getting this project going in the fall. And we all discussed it and agreed that it would be better to wait until the spring when we could get a, a good request for proposal out. Plus, we didn't want the work to start in the fall and then not be able to activate the system until the spring. Uh, and you all agreed that when this motion came back in front of you, because the money that was in his two thousand twenty Parks budget would go back in to the general fund and be available to you this year, that would agree to go ahead and approve the project for this year. So that's what this is all about? Any other comments?
Parks, Parks got everything in their, their meeting?
I think so.
Set up to grow or extend?
Well, so John pretty played good time on this deal, I mean, I think you guys figured it out pretty good.
Sounds good to me.
It was a joint effort with the golf course as well. Oh, yeah, Jason was, he was very informational too.
All right, Mr. Tewitt, call the roll, please.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Upstate.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. New business, item C, possible motion discussion to approve request for proposal two thousand twenty-one dash four?
I'll make a motion to approve the RFP twenty twenty-one dash four Fall River Channel Restoration Landscape Phase One Project. Sealed bids will be received and opened by Kelly Works Committee April thirteenth with recommendation for the responsive bidder selection to City Council on April nineteenth.
Second. Discussion? Just like to mention that as I was reading through this request for proposal, I got excited about the possibilities of what's happening on that section of the river. Uh, the work that the city crews have been putting into it and looking through what John came up with and the possibilities of where we could be several years down the road with this Fall River Channel Restoration Project. I'm, I'm excited. I think the next two years, the city of Hot Springs has a lot of opportunities in front of us. Shame on us if we don't take advantage of them. Uh, I thank the council for putting money in the budgets this year to manage the flood wall and the river channel and those kinds of things. It's your willingness to budget for these kinds of things that are actually making this happen. And we will certainly have it back in front of you for the two thousand twenty-two budgets. And if we find a way to continue funding these things along with the new road project, suspended sidewalk, restore river channel, there are exciting times ahead of us. Mr. Tewitt, call the roll, please.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. New business, item D, a possible motion discussion to approve and authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement.
Make the motion to approve, authorize the city administrator to sign the professional services agreement with KLJ Engineers for Engineering Design through the bid letting services for the North River Street Reconstruction at Evans Plunge for twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Uh, John, would you tell us a little bit about this, please?
We've been discussing this with the DOT as, as we've been making some plans to reconstruct that road. And it was suggested by the DOT that we try to have our project ready to go about the same time of their bid letting to maximize the use of the contractor that they get and reduce our cost on, on the reconstruction of the actual road. Since what we're proposing is basically the same thing that DOT is proposing for their road.
Any questions?
We've done the geotechnical drilling on this. We, we understand what's, what's there now and we're ready for the design phase and bid levels.
Any questions for John? Mr. Tewitt, call the roll.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. New business, item B, a possible motion discussion to approve and publish request for proposals for two thousand twenty-one paid.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and publish request for proposal for twenty twenty-one paying the Hot Springs Airport.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Tewitt, call the roll.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yeah.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. New business, item F, possible motion discussion to authorize Library Director Don Johnson to accept Stephanie Miller Davis Library Grant.
Make a motion to authorize Library Director Don Johnson to accept Stephanie Miller Davis Library Grant for one thousand dollars in support of the two thousand twenty-one summer reading program.
Second. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please, Mr.?
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. New business, item G, possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement?
I would make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the additional sales tax fund two one two dash two one two zero zero dash four two two zero zero for the construction management for, of the Jennings Avenue Bridge project. Reimbursement, reimbursement revenue received from the big grant funding.
Second.
He got you.
Discussion? Mr. Tewitt, call the roll, please.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes, thank you.
The motion passes. New business, item H, a possible motion discussion to approve an automatic budget supplement? Another one?
I'll make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents to the additional sales tax fund two one two dash two one two zero zero dash four two two zero zero for preliminary design engineering for airport multi-unit T hangar project. Reimbursement revenue received from the AIP grant funding number three dash four six dash zero zero two two dash zero one three dash two zero two zero.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Tewitt, call the roll, please.
Burris?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Johnston? Lukens?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Romi?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we're not on our committee reports. Administrative Finance, Caitlin?
Our next meeting is April fifth at one o'clock. It's the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Airport Advisory, Bill?
Next Airport Advisory is Thursday, March twenty-fifth, eight AM at the airport.
Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Larry?
Meeting of the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District started in nineteen oh five. All were present except two board members. Treasurer's report was given by Starla Russell. The outstanding expenses and transfer total was forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-seven cents. The landfill has twenty-two point five percent decrease in expenses year to date twenty twenty-one and then year to date twenty twenty. The landfill also has a six point three one percent increase in deposits year to date twenty twenty-one and year to date twenty twenty. The tire shredding grant expense was forty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in June twenty nineteen. Grant repay to the two state of twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seven cents in December twenty nineteen. Tire shredding grant reimbursement of fifty-two thousand one hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents June twenty nineteen is a six point five one percent increase. Otherwise, twenty nineteen compact grant purchase, it is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars in October twenty nineteen. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferred from FI Money Market for new CD and ICS accounts flow through in December twenty twenty. One hundred and five thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-four cents transferred from Dakota Bank for new financial insurance CD with Liberty National flow through in January twenty twenty-one. The total district funds available are nine hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, nine hundred and thirty, ninety-six cents. Total finance insurance funds for five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight and forty-six cents. The landfill accept, the landfill has accepted fifty-three point fifty-six tons less to year to date twenty twenty-one than year to date twenty twenty. The landfill has accepted sixty-eight point eighty-three tons more in rubble year to date twenty twenty-one than twenty twenty. The landfill website will add a link to the outside website and info will be posted on the link. Membership to South Dakota Solid Waste Management Association. Motion to send four members to Solid Waste Management Association Conference. Grant number two zero two zero G dash S W dash three zero one. Compacted grant execution of resolution two thousand twenty-one dash zero zero one. Approval of grant for phase two sale closure and drainage projects cost, motion and second. Contract managers report daily landfill operations and actions required are going to carry back to reports. Jason is working on the timeline for develop a storm water prevention plan should be ready by fourth of July. Tire shredding disposal, tire cutters up to two hundred and forty tires per hour. Thirty hours for two guys over a ton an hour projected. Charges vary for different sized tires. FNG report, Jason Hyde, March second, twenty twenty-one landfill sites visit and updates on phase two sale closure, rubble site drainage and grid needs were discussed, including where the annual progression report update, status of annual water test report submission, the phase two sale closure and drainage projects cost grant. Meeting was adjourned at zero eight ten PM. Next meeting will be May thirteen, twenty twenty-one at seven PM at the Mueller Center.
Any questions for Larry? Thank you, Larry. Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
Um, the Historic Preservation Commission has, um, March third, October fifth, President Howard Gillen, George Vaughn, John Muller, Luke Doyle, Karen Higgins, Mike Summer. Members asked to withdraw from the project and would like to offer to stop. Hot Springs representative, President of the Department of State, Scott Sookie. Also President of the Georgia Home and Land Management. Our minutes were beginning to improve. Our best wishes for the scouts that are pending editing by the morning hours. The status of the sign for the Marcus House and the Berry Building on University Avenue. Was discussed that Scott Sookie indicated that the shop owner has not pursued an application. Many additional items they rejected earlier, some of our actions have taken. Assign the application for the food gathering, discussed the second time. These are the revised diagrams of business. Although the diagram was re, this is revised, the application was not updated. Members still had questions about the signs of solid color that were not addressed in the application's background. Scott Sookie will contact the food gathering to clarify. If needed for executing a meeting, the commission will have an email from the Scott. After Scott gets back to us. Every Johnson provided an update on the state of our plans, Stonehenge, Dave Jogan. These are the pre-activity needs for our non-confidential organization. Which show require a number of messages to be delivered every file. The other options would be to organize a non-confidential organization. There will be meaning to discuss how to move forward. If this is Mike Summer with all good, happy month of the mission. Thank you very much for doing me. Stay with me now. Provided an update on the ad hoc committee meeting, now February sixteenth. I don't believe you love the general direction the committee is pursuing for the Scott. The focus of the committee is to develop a comprehensive system of extension related to history, historic preservation, pipe, flash, standard, and craft. These materials will be available by the Hot Springs City Web page or our copy in county order. Historic district buildings and sites of the world, restoration projects. Luke Doyle provided government website links to several of the details. Dot U S K Instagram, Dan's Secretary's Instagram, standard, hotel location. These are P D S files that have permission to download, posting to Hot Springs website. And that's that, our meeting will be this Thursday or Tuesday at one P M. And that said, on the meeting will be this Thursday or Friday at 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Evans Park, this is a method of application to meet their control. From the top of the building to the northwest corner of the property and intersection of North River State and National Avenue. Application laws reviewed and discussed in person by the head of the department. Declaration of Rights for the special building were presented by Deborah, Deborah Johnson. Discussion on, on fall, transition to demolition from East Avenue. On his desire to save the building and his work team with others will come up with a plan. From somewhere in the town, straight into the road project along with that land building experience and will be working on a possible lab alternative. Brian Powers, that's a meeting, I'll be taking email to Kimberly Alley. Originally purchased, the spent barrow building Ted is planning to do in the perfect exterior and historic restoration project. He will be at the last year of commission agenda, that is, he said, the meeting that we have done has been elected, a motion based on the work that's required. He suggested that we put this on there, most of the agenda. The next meeting will be April 7th, by the end of the year.
Any questions for Deborah? Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory?
The next meeting of the Evans.
Okay. Yeah. Miss is making a note of it. Thank you for your time, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory, Larry?
The next meeting of the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee will be this Thursday, 18th, at 12:00 noon at Evans Plunge.
Thank you. Parks Recreation and Brutification, Wes?
Yeah, we had a meeting Wednesday, March 3rd. I'm gonna make this kind of quick. Miss, Miss, Adam Heath and his wife, they, they come to the meeting and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, John helped me out, or they pretty much got the funding for the fence.
That's correct. They get funding for the bills.
So, we should see some progress down there at that dog park here real shortly. The front gate improvement is completed at the cemetery. Bob Dulles, we're still having some issues with this GPS tourism mapping deal. I can't remember if it was a software issue trying to mesh with ours. I think it's, maybe it's a website integration issue. Recreation Department, Kathy Grant is ready for spring and she said she's raring to go. She put out her schedule and I believe that hit the paper last week, something I saw in there, I believe, with the sign up. Talking a little bit more about that memorial bench donation for Jack Wees and Dave Scott. That's progressed along. Parks Assets Discussion, where the Butler Park, bleacher repair, I think at this time they probably got them all done as of, when we, we spoke, they had five done. Stoppin Park's upper and lower, that's still kind of a weather pending issue, so it's still kind of, it's still gonna happen as time persists. Centennial Park, the, the work has resumed on the channel. Hyner is hoping to be in there and have all his work done by April 1st. It's just another weather situation. Brookside Park, we learn tonight, we've got this R and P going out and, uh, ready for the, the bidders to come in and I guess we can hopefully get something going here real shortly on that with the sprinkler system. We gotta get the trees marked and I think I was told they are marked, that need to be trimmed down there. Uh, School Streets, School Street Park, the wooden playground equipment, the Marion Island Fall Zone, um, that's still kind of a weather related issue. The Mueller Center, we discussed a little bit about the skylight repair and the March schedule and as we all noticed, we've got some heat in the one meeting room, which is awful nice. Hopefully we could get the rest of the building taken care of too. The electrical panel's been changed at the depot. And I, that was about it.
Any questions for Wes?
The next meeting will be the first Wednesday, it will be March 7th at 3:00 at the Mueller Center. Or I mean, April.
Any questions for Wes? Uh, Wes had mentioned something about the cemetery and a little hiccup there. The, um, website redesign took a pause as Justin Gausman with the chamber moved on and tried to figure out how we were, um, going to get the website redesign going. Justin was very comfortable with helping with that design. Jared has stepped up, um, and we're, we're having those conversations again. There was a little concern about whether the cemetery information could be put on the new website. And it's important because the cemetery is the number nine hit on the current website, so people are using it a lot. And we've worked through that hurdle. We'll be meeting weekly with Gov Office to get going. It may take a little longer, but it's important that we get it right rather than get it rushed. I'll keep getting the updates on that. The cemetery issue, I, I think is behind us. Thank you, Wes. Planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, JR is going to be the new chair for that. This time of year, he's particularly busy at the, um, the county and Caitlin was chair of two committees and JR was just, he, he didn't have his own committee, so he, he didn't share his thoughts with the folks a lot, so he stepped up and, uh, agreed to go ahead and take over planning and zoning. Thank you for that, Jared.
All right. Enough of that. Caitlin, they miss you. Believe me, they, they've all said so. Planning and zoning commission met on Wednesday, uh, March 2nd at 6:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Guest was Mayor Bob Nelson. Don Alstead called a meeting to order with Allison Ritter Bush, Christine Heidebrink, Jarred Olson, Deborah Johnson, Dwight Wina and Wayne Hagman and Scott Soggy present. Motion to approve the agenda was approved by, uh, motion by Ritter Bush, second by Heidebrink and Carrie. Conflicts and interest were none. We had approval of the minutes of the January 18, 2020 meeting, the November 18, 2020 meeting and the December 16, 2020, uh, minutes. Those were all approved, uh, due to lack of quorum, is my understanding. Public comments were at setback discussion from Larry Vega Property to new business. New business alley vacating Kelly Jewell 821 Allen. Owners requesting to vacate the alley and build a cottage 40 by 50 with garage on the property. After much, much discussion, it was determined that a true and accurate survey is needed to identify the true property points, actual street widths. It was said that the alley would probably never be developed, uh, but a future utility use is not known and an easement should be considered for the Sulphur Springs addition. Roth Property Plotting. Property was owned by four relatives that divided the property ownership only using legal descriptions. They did not have the property survey created drawing or showing dimensions, lot lines and property points. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to the city council is to require the property be platted to show streets access to all parcels and create the city right of ways to allow future utility access and city services. Uh, Item 3, Bader Lot Line Setback, Larry Bader 902L. Requested a front yard setback changed after discussion of planning. Commission agreed that the front yard setback request will match the other houses on the street that are all hindered by steepness and usefulness of the rear, at the rear of their property. Requested setback matches other houses currently on the street and will blend in with the neighborhood. Don Alstead commented that Bader is just lining up the home with the other homes and in fact, his house may be the furthest back from the street. Motion by Don, second by Christine, motion Carrie. Old Business, Neighborhood Density ADU was not discussed, um, and inaccession not discussed. Meeting ended at 8:05 p.m. Our next meeting will be 12, March 17th, 7:00 p.m. in the Mueller Center.
Any questions for JR?
The meeting changed to 7:00 p.m.?
That's correct. Thank you. Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Uh, Public Safety will meet tomorrow, the 17th, 1:00 p.m. here at the Mueller Center. I do have one update that I'd like to provide the council. Uh, there was a concern passed on to the mayor that one of the reserve officers, uh, had completed, uh, had not completed, uh, the required firearms qualifications. A review of the training records show that all officers and reserve officers were previously qualified. Because of ammunition shortages, some of the requalifications were delayed as authorized by the state of South Dakota. Since the PD was able to recently procure ammunition, all full-time officers and reserve officers are current on their required firearms qualifications.
Thank you. Public Works, Dave, Trey?
Last meeting was March 9th. In attendance was Bob Nelson, Deborah Johnson, Tracy Bastian, Craig Romy, John Gregory, Dwight Wina and myself, Dave Burris. We had a discussion with Dwight Wina, uh, with the water usage, an invoice for 505 and a half of the street. Still trying to figure out what, what went wrong there. But, um, last person that lived in his home, uh, went to town, had the water shut off, moved out of the house. Next renter came in, um, water was being used, but meter was being ripped. We didn't know that they actually moved into the home. So, we, uh, are figuring that out. Gonna make up new ways so we don't get back into this again. Uh, Silver Light Extension, we, uh, we're discussing with the owner Brad and Kelly on the fix, um, for the Ace Hardware Store. Public Safety and Public Works, discussion on an icy spot. Their vision source, uh, business on Albany Avenue, street parking. There is a, with the lack of a better way of putting it, just a big skating rink right in the middle of the parking lot over. Gaming is a problem, so it needs to be repaired. With other new business discussion and disposition of Hot Springs PD 2013 Ford Taurus. Last update, we slated for, uh, Spring 2021 auction. Moving on down, discussion and legal, uh, the wastewater plant repairs required. Heard D E N R and Black Hills Electric, including the, a digester lead, a secondary clarifier suite, electrical issues. On the electrical issues, we have issued the low bid for Flint for $3,700. We are presently looking at whether it'd be better for the city to purchase the components for all that's needed, but we are waiting for the water to drain the water down so we can check the clarifier suite. Possibly need less repairs on that and we know until the water comes down, we can get in there and inspect it. It's kind of up in the air. But we are considering looking at buying the components of the city and seeing if, uh, we would be in a better shape to have some competitive bids put out for installation for the city of those said items. Street Maintenance Department, uh, we had 12 items that were deemed, 12 areas that were deemed, uh, dangerous intersections due to visibility, due to brush, trees, overgrowth. Out of those 12, eight of those were already taken care of already by the owner, property owners and two quite possibly will have to be done by the city. The other two, we are still in discussion with Utilities Department. Contractor Rod Reynolds, uh, has stepped aside for the 837 Hickory Street residence that is looking to have sewer install plan. You know, property owners aren't quite sure what they want to do as of yet, so we, as a city, we're, we're not part of that, so when they get ready, they'll be back to us. Jennings Bridge, new water line failure, that's a warranty item that will not be too many costs that I know of and, and it's heard of for the city. And we to discuss, uh, new sewer flow meters. Let's see. And then as you heard us talking and we voted on now the Evans Plunge, uh, the River Street reconstruction and the front of Evans Plunge repair. Dollar General, we are still, uh, waiting for them to get approval from the DOT for their entryway for their second building here in town. And our next meeting will be March the 30th, 1:00 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Everybody's welcome to come. Dave, do you like that?
Okay. Any questions for Dave or Trey? Thank you, gentlemen. Southern Hills Economic Development, JR?
Is Andres still here?
No.
Nope. Okay, we have not met. Next meeting to be determined.
Hi there. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory, the next scheduled meeting is March 22nd. The, as they prepare, um, for opening the course, then we'll start having our regular ones and we'll provide you updates as, as we have those.
What time is it?
City Hall, March 22nd, 5:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Misty, you're up.
All right. Uh, we received notification on Thursday, March 11th of the leave, the governor announced leave for Good Friday and Easter Monday, April 2nd and 5th, and our city follows other recommendations of the state. I'd like to read the governor's announcement. Thank you. We are all working together to strengthen South Dakota families and I want you to know that each of you is a part of that. This work starts at home and we spend time with our own families. That's why I'm granting administrative leave for both Good Friday and Easter Monday, April 2nd and 5th, 2021. I hope this extra time gives you a chance to celebrate the reason for the Easter holiday, to see your family and to enjoy your time with them. Thank you again for all that you do for our great state. So that changes our April meeting, uh, the first meeting in April from Monday the 5th to Tuesday the 6th. In the Finance Office, today we worked on annual PCI compliance for Evans Punch Mineral Springs City Hall and the golf course. That's regarded to, that's related to payment card processing. It happens annually. We are still accepting nominating petitions for Alderman and on four of our wards. The deadline for those petitions is the 30th of March at 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. That's a Tuesday. I have some notes regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, which is the 1.9 trillion dollar bill, the, too many, I, too many dollars, uh, plan that was just adopted. There are some general changes to state and local fiscal recovery funds. We're still getting information about that, but the American Rescue Plan does have 291 million in local fiscal relief. We did receive an email from Yvonne Taylor, the municipal lead, that had a non-entitlement allocation projection for Hot Springs of 600,000. We also received some information about, uh, the rescue plan and the additional 1.9 trillion COVID relief package and $8 billion for airports. General aviation airports are allocated some funding to cover costs related to operations, personnel, uh, cleaning, sanitization, and I gave you an update on some of those in the last conference meeting. We're looking at approximately 13,000 for our airport. The other big part of that includes 608 million to cover 100% federal share for grants awarded in 2021, um, that had less than 100% federal share. Our airport engineers are meeting with the FAA this week to see what they can learn. They're not certain right now, the impact, the project. They're not certain right now the impact the project, that it will have on our T-hanger project, but it has the strong potential to significantly reduce the local funding needed on the project. I had some updates to cover regarding the legislative session. The only one I'm going to talk about today is that HB 1127, an act to revise certain provisions regarding official meetings conducted by teleconference, has been approved and is on the governor's desk. The current law requires all votes on a meeting conducted by teleconference to be taken by roll call vote. This bill would allow a voice vote unless any member objected. So I just wanted to mention that update. I'll have some more for you at the next one. But what we just had to do tonight for this meeting has been approved to be changed as long as you're okay with it, and we may not have to do that in the future, so that's good news.
So there's cover for me when I get it wrong?
Absolutely. We won't have to do it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Steve? Thank you. John, you're next.
All right, everybody. We covered a lot of my stuff already in this meeting. We met with the DOT on the border this month.
John? A little, yeah, a little closer.
Yeah. So we met with the DOT to talk about progress on our highway reconstruction. We did confirm the September bid letting is on schedule on variant. Drawing deadlines coming up end of this month. Our city utilities project, Tracy's been leading those, trying to get all that done, all the little seminoles that go with that. ISU also has been getting all their drawings and seminoles finalized with the DOT. As mentioned, we've had several discussions about West Show with various entities, including Rameen Stedlen, his engineer Lance Ray, and I'm. Our Streets Maintenance and Utilities Department have covered three snow clearing events this month. They go on this past weekend. They appreciated everybody's patience and the time that it took to get that, that amount of snow moved off our streets. They've continued the rough grading and shaping work on our Fall River Channel and Phase One Landscape Area. It's interesting to talk to them while they're down there because they really enjoy doing work like that, and they feel like they're making, building something. We've, our streets and Utilities Department have all given me their worked up calendars for their leave request, putting their forms for vacation carryover consideration. This is what was part of that personnel policy we mentioned to approve at our last meeting. Our Utilities Department continues with several sewer pipe issues. There's clay pipe failures around town. Tracy's making a point as to how they're going to improve those or bypass those in the end of 2019 highway reconstruction. Spent a good bill, a good bit of time on the R and P preparations that you approved tonight. Learned about sprinkler systems, and I learned about native flora and seeds that go with that. Our Evans Plunge people finished their maintenance closure, cleared an overhaul of the hot tubs, and other health club improvements. Also, they did their regular painting and deep cleaning, and they did some welding and handrail improvements. Hope Homes has got the excavation for the two basements done on their workforce housing project. They're working on getting the comprehensive plan in front of you. We have a public hearing in front of Planning and Zoning anticipated for April 21st, then it will be returned to council. Another public hearing to be set up on May 3rd. Hopefully, this can finally get accepted and approved. Been hanging around since I got hired in previous administrations. Southern Hills Golf Course Clubhouse, the foundation repair work has begun. They started leveling the slab. I think that'll do for us now. Thank you.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. First, I'd like to thank the city employees that have been working steadily over the last few days to clear our streets of the recent snow falling. Because of the amount of wet snow that fell, more of it was left in driveways than usual, requiring residents to spend more time clearing their driveways. That's regrettable and unavoidable. The crews were working to make an infrequent snow event as manageable as possible, and I thank them. I'd also like to recognize all the other folks that work for the city. The staff at City Hall, the Mueller Center, the library, Evans Plunge, and Mr. Steve and John who helped us get through our council meetings. These folks along with the street water and sewer employees are dedicated to serving Hot Springs residents in a professional manner. For the last eight months on a daily basis, I've watched our city employees always strive to serve our residents just as they would want to be served in return. Thank you for your job well done. And finally, once again, I'm responding to social media posts that have been made since the March 1 council meeting. I continue to be puzzled and disappointed by how often individuals with no firsthand knowledge of a particular subject feel obligated to share their misinformed opinion. Specific post made after the March 1 council meeting I want to address is the following ignorant comment left by a member of the public. Quote, "What a poor response from the city council. No one had the guts to say anything to Larry. The whole council should be ashamed of itself." End of quote. This comment is a perfect example of the ongoing misinformed comments that are so maddening. The individual that made that comment has no firsthand knowledge of why the March 1 council meeting unfolded the way that it did. This individual is the one who should be ashamed of themselves for making such an obviously incorrect comment. This council honored councilman Pratt's request to make a statement and return to the council table, just as we will for any other council member that may want to address the council as a member of the public. With that, I'll yield back the rest of my time for anyone on the council that feels they may need to respond to being accused of being gutless. It was disrespectful, it was unnecessary. And if you feel you'd like to respond, that's your call.
I don't feel a response dignified for comments like that. That's one of the reasons I am not on social media, and I will never be on social media. It's a platform for somebody to get their digs in, doesn't have the guts to come to me face to face and say what they feel. So that response by him, her, whomever, won't get one from me. You don't deserve one.
I guess I've got a comment. First of all, I'd just like to say that I do believe that the First Nations residents of our community are an important part of our community. And I'd also like to say that Larry is a good friend of mine, and when I heard what, when he shared with me the statement regarding him, I could, I could sense the pain that it caused him, and it hurt my heart that my friend was suffering some of the same wounds that he grew up with. That being said, if Larry and I were not friends, but just colleagues on this council and opposed to each other on many issues, the statement made toward him was still an unfortunate one. But that's, that's passed now, and Wes and Larry have had a conversation. And Wes, I appreciate the fact that you and Larry have sat down, and I appreciate the comments that you made tonight during communications from the public. So, you know, I, I'm glad that we're able to move on from that. And, you know, the council, we may have been silent, but we weren't ignorant.
I was brought in on that conversation on Facebook. My wife reads it, I don't read it. If anything ever happens for some reason, it's Wes or I. My wife is a Cheyenne Indian. Wes's wife is an Indian, and it's red-stripped and a reservation. So I don't believe neither one of us are racist. But some of the comments these people say, and put initials on there, I, I just, I don't understand how they can belittle themselves to get on Facebook and say things like that, that they have no idea what went on here or anything, but they seem to think they have a comment to make. I mean, if it fit their way, half the council would be hung by now. So, like I say, I don't read that. I won't say what I think it is. So keep on putting your stuff on Facebook if that's what you thinks, gotta turn your
Okay, since I'm the one started this. You know, Wes and I, we got it worked out, we're good. We still wave at each other when we drive by. But, you know, in response to what Bill said here, all my life, I mean, it was hard, you know, being Native American, being in the school where most of the time I was a Native American there. And so, you know, in a lot of ways, it did dredge up a lot of unresolved issues, hidden anchors, things like that. But I do want to say to the, to the people in this town, being on this council has taught me one valuable lesson, and that is, I'm learning how to better deal with situations that have arisen. And the way, the situation between Wes and I, was a blessing in disguise because it really helped me deal with a lot of my issues that came back to me. I'm no longer a child, I'm a grown man now, and I'm representing the town the best as I can by setting all this council along with everybody else. And, you know, that, I'm proud to do that. Doesn't matter what race I am or what my heritage is. We have a diverse, we have ladies on here, we have individuals that are different nationalities on here. We have old and we have young on here. I mean, we're doing the best we can with what we've got, and sometimes that's about all we can do. So I appreciate the town for what this, you know, for the good positive things that were said on there toward me as a human being, I appreciate that. And I do appreciate this council for standing behind me. I'm just grateful, just grateful, thank you.
I just hope you don't, none of you all ever listen to 90.1 KIELI because you're feeling you're going to get hurt. That's all I have to say to you. Have a good evening.
All right. I make a motion, we adjourn. I say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Have a good evening, everyone.